I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Without further ado, I turn it over to the students of Edward Little High School.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to today's Auburn Public Forum. My name is Patrick Luizzo. I'm a senior at Edward Little High School. I'd first like to start off by introducing my classmates. First, we have Julia Milks, senior, Alex Landry, senior, we're all seniors, actually, Nick Hathaway, Grant Hartley, Bilal Hussein, Mason Legassi, Spencer Frann. Our two timekeepers today are Grace Bodett and Ella Henry, and our wonderful teacher, Mr. Letusia. So tonight's forum is hosted by the Auburn Business Association. Our candidates for tonight. For the City Council, Ward One, Holly Lasagna; Ward Two, Robert Hayes; Ward Three, Andrew Titus; Ward Four, Alfreda Fornier; Ward Five, Dustin Miles and Leroy Walker; and at-large candidates, Belinda Gary and David Young. For the school committee, Ward Two, Bonnie Hayes; and at-large, Faith Fontaine, Pat Gucci, and Claire Nacinovich. The moderators and timekeepers this evening will consist of Edward Little High School seniors who are taking the AP United States Government course taught by Mr. Craig Letusia. The public forum will be divided into multiple parts. The first part focusing on the candidate's background; the second part focusing on domestic issues; and Part Three focusing on a hodgepodge, basically a wild card. Our format will be as follows. We will ask each candidate at least two questions. The candidate will have two minutes to answer. I would like to remind all the candidates tonight that this is not a debate, it is a forum. Our team of leaders here is honored to be here tonight. We respect all of your roles in our community and acknowledge the seriousness of this event. So to begin, I would like to start off with Julia Milks.
Hello, my name is Julia Milks. Our first question tonight is for Mrs. Hayes. Why are you running for the school board?
I'm running for the school board, and I've run for many, many years on the same platform, if you want to call it a platform, is that I believe that children in Auburn, in our Auburn school system, should have the best education that we can possibly give them, as well as our taxpayers, we have to be physically responsible to our taxpayers. And that's a balancing act in this generation of economics. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you.
My name's Alex Landry. I'd like to ask the at-large candidates, what is your position on the replacement of the Edward Little High School? Starting with Claire.
Hi, well, it's long overdue, as many people would probably agree with me on that. I'm really happy and excited that the Yale High School will soon be replaced, and I think it's really important that we put a significance on the facilities of where our children get educated. It's an important issue, and I hope that it's resolved soon.
Do you want me to go next?
Yeah.
Well, I'm really excited about the new high school. I started in 2002. We had an accreditation visit, and we wrote the self-study. And while we were writing it, we decided we were going to go public with the issues in the building. So I have worked for 14 years to get the money for that school, and I'm very proud, and I can't wait for it to come. I just wish you people were going to be able to participate. But maybe your children, when you come back to town after you go away, you know, go to college and all of that stuff, and you come back, and it's still going to be a great school. So I'm very, very anxious to have that shovel go in the ground. Thank you.
I'm a 1998 graduate of Edward Little High School, and I'm sad to say that a lot has not changed. I have a junior at the high school, and when I go to visit or go in the cafeteria, it brings back memories. And graduating in 1998, it probably shouldn't, some things, nothing should be the same. So I'm thrilled. I would like to see a state-of-the-art facility that will bring more business to Auburn, bring more families. I think it's very important that, when it goes to local referendum, to vote on money allotted towards the fine arts and athletics. It's important that we really think this through, because this is going to be a huge asset for the community, and it really will bring more business, more families. I think it's important to have it at a place where all of, either we can hold plays, that, you know, right now we're having them at Great Falls. I think it should be a central meeting place that the community can also use. And with sports, I'd like to see all the sports fields there and utilize them, make it the best we can, just to draw more people to the community.
Hi, I'm Nick Hathaway. My question is for Mrs. Lasagna. What is the biggest issue facing your ward, and how would you help solve the problem?
To me, one of the biggest issues in Ward One is the idea of sort of the tension between being a rural community and also looking at economic development in the community. There's been a lot of discussion, and we're waiting for a study to find out, is it possible to be able to do some economic development around very specific areas that will bring money and also people to our community, but without really compromising our, both the agriculture, but also the rural nature of the community.
Thank you.
I'm Grant Hartley, and I have a question for Mr. Hayes. What exactly would you do to help revitalize our downtown?
I guess my view on downtown development, I think it's a spinoff of greater economic development within the whole community. I think that economic development, to me, is bringing in activities that will actually bring dollars into the community, which then go out through employment, through needed services, and so forth. And those dollars, as they spread out throughout the community, then get spent in large part within a downtown or the retail centers and eateries and so forth. So I think it's really twofold. I think that, I guess I'm still of the older mindset. I know the newer mindset with new technologies and so forth, we look for those technologies to be housed within the downtown, to make it a more vibrant community center. So, but I still feel that we need greater economic development, greater employment, so that we can get more dollars into the community that then can be spread into the downtown.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Bilal Hussein. I have a question for Mr. Andrew Titus, running for Ward Three. What, bouncing off of the previous question, how would you help attract millennial-based businesses here to revitalize the downtown?
Well, I think, first of all, I think we're on the right track. We're already starting a project in New Auburn. So we need to definitely upgrade what we have. We are heading towards getting things like Wi-Fi in the community, and upgraded lighting, and all those kinds of things. And then, we got to continue with that kind of project. We have to be careful, though, because everybody wants to try to compare us to Portland in that area. And right now, they're having to put rent control in because they've gone way too high in their economic development. It's kind of priced everybody out of Portland. So I guess we got to watch it there to make sure that we're offering something that can be afforded by most people. And then they're going to want to come back. And the way we're going to do that is by building that area and building tax value, more money coming in to be used for more infrastructure, like Wi-Fi, for instance, everywhere, so that we can encourage people to come back and stay.
My name is Mason Legassi, and I have a question for Belinda Gary and David Young. Do you support an increase or a decrease in the school budget, and why?
Thank you. I support giving our students the best education possible. But providing a best education doesn't mean always putting money towards it. I mean, you, in other words, I want to fund what we need to fund for the education, but it's a balance between what we put into it for financial, because it's not always the financial, it's also in-kind services. I mean, we need to draw more community people, whether they have, whether they're parents or people without kids, like myself, into helping our kids in our schools. Because there's a lot of issues that our students need help with, and we need to pull the community in to help support them. They say that it takes a village to raise a child, and I believe in that. The city has only so much funds, so it's a balance of having to fund the needs of the city and the school department. I don't want to cut the school too low, but I can't, in good conscience, vote to give them everything we have, because we need monies to run the city. We need monies set aside for economic development to, as a help, as a tool, to bring people into the business, and to help those students when they graduate from college, I mean, from high school, to be able to start their business. So it's a multifaceted thing.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Do you support an increase or a decrease in the school budget, and why?
Okay. It's not so much an increase or a decrease in the school budget. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the school department's always got more money every year. I mean, it's gone up. And spending more money for something doesn't necessarily make it better. If spending money for education, the most you could spend, made better schools, New York City would have the best schools in the country, and we know they don't. So my opponent did mention that parents' involvements and citizens' involvements in the community is something more than what you could ever budget in any budget. The best schools are the ones that have strong PTAs or PTOs, and parents really be involved in being a part of educating their children. The teachers can only do so much, and they can never replace what parents can foster in the education type of system. When we hire some expert to do a job, it should never say that we relinquish our responsibilities as parents to help educate. In fact, I think it's in the law, in the start, when they started this country, parents were responsible to see their child as educated. And then we established schools, they took that responsibility sort of away, but it's never taken away. And we will pass a budget. This, the school department prepares a budget, we approve the budget, and then we send it to the voters. And when we sit here, we try to think about, what's the most, when we ask, that will pass? And a couple of years ago, we passed a budget, and I think it was failed, was it twice? Did it fail? Till the third time, it finally passed.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Spencer Frann. I have a question for the Ward Five candidates. And my question is, do you approve the charter and the consolidation agreement that, as recommended by the Lewiston Auburn Joint Charter Commission? Walker, we can start with you.
I do not. I haven't for over two years. So I formed a coalition against the merger, and we put together a pretty good team, I think. I believe you're going to find we're going to win this thing. The no vote will come out ahead, and there's a lot of reasons. They have stated that there's a lot of money to be saved here, 2.4, 4.6, and it goes on and on and on. Them numbers are so bogus there that you couldn't catch it with a net as big as the Red Sox baseball field, so. No, I don't support it, I won't support it, and I think that's the way the city should be as well.
Mr. Miles?
Well, I feel like that was, question was given to him. But no, I also agree with Mr. Walker. I have a unique situation, actually, working in Lewiston, living here in Auburn with my family. And after talking to people on both sides of it, and really reading the independent report and seeing what would come out of it, I didn't want to jump to conclusions. The current way that the merger is proposed would not benefit taxpayers the way that they may say it does. I'm firmly against it, and I feel like we need to, however, invest in our relationship with Lewiston and Auburn, in making sure that just because we may not merge and become two into one city, we continue to work together in small business and in other areas to attract people to our area, and not just turn a blind eye. This is a very important time in our cities, one of the reasons why I wanted to run for City Council, and it is critical that we continue to build our relationships with others in the future.
Thank you.
Our next question is for Ms. Fornier. What do you think the biggest issue facing Auburn is, and how do you plan on fixing it?
I have two children, and they're in their 40s. When I came here 50 years ago, I was a newlywed bride, and I loved this city, and I still do. I was so excited, because it was the big city. And at that time, Sputnik era was taking place. That meant that through Kennedy, John F. Kennedy, that we had a lot more money to have fewer teachers, fewer students with more teachers. So we had smaller class sizes. So that was the beginning of a really good time in terms of history in education. I'm an educator, a former educator, I'm a retired educator. And I was a principal for 17 years, and I was a director for Child Development Services for four years in my retirement job. And prior to that, you know, I was a teacher also, especially a teacher of 17 years. So the thing that I'm thinking of is that we had an excellent, excellent education going on here. And numbers count. Smaller schools, my concern, smaller schools, fewer students per class, and more teachers. That's where the money should go. So if you don't have that in a city or in a community, this is what first draws families. They come here first, because they want to raise their children in an excellent educational system. And they're going to go wherever that takes place, and then they will work here. You know, their work might bring them here. But also, the fact that a good educational system is taking place in any community, that's what's going to draw them. I know I'm trying to sell my house. I mean, my house, you know, the real estate agent uses this as, you know, as a way to get families to move in.
Time's up.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick. Our next question is for Mrs. Bonnie Hayes. What do you feel is the number-one challenge facing our school system today?
The number-one challenge facing our school system today is safety. Every child should be able to go to school and feel safe, and be safe. So I'm always concerned about safety for the children. I'm concerned about state mandates, and how we're going to fund the unfunded state mandates that are coming down from the governor. I was at a conference last week, and it's going to be very interesting when it begins. So those two things are very important to me, is that the safety of the children, and how, in light of whomever may get elected, how we're going to fund the unfunded state mandates.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the three at-large school committee candidates. Do you support the merger of Lewiston and Auburn, and why, starting at Mrs. Fontaine?
Thank you. I do, I'm not a supporter of the merger. I think we're two large cities with our own issues. I think we work well together, and there's a lot of programs, there's a lot of small businesses that work well together, and we get benefits from that. Whether it's adult ed, whether it's the sports programs, or the small businesses, I think that's positive. I don't think we should, at the state we're in right now, merge the cities. In my opinion, it will be bigger problems, bigger issues, more students, you know, confusion with the schools. I have to say, I'm not in support at all of the merger.
Well, I'm sitting on the bridge. I cannot make up my mind. I see pros and I see cons. And I guess if I sit on the bridge, it means that's a no answer at this point. I do feel, as Faith mentioned, that we are two different communities. I'm a traditionalist at heart. I like things the way they are. I don't like a lot of change. But I do feel, regardless of how this, the vote goes, that we need to be in collaboration with Lewiston for many, many reasons. Economic development, we need to go back and work together. This is a huge region. We're already doing things like 911, the airport. There are all kinds of things that we do, we buy things together. I know Superintendent Grandin and Superintendent Webster work together. I know the libraries work together. And there's no reason why we can't do that, but keeping our own unique history and personality.
Hi, I would say that it's not for the school board members to decide, so I wouldn't be comfortable telling you what my position is, because the voters of Lewiston Auburn are going to decide that. And I would echo a little bit about what Pat just said, which is that I do think it's important to collaborate regardless of what the outcome of this vote is, that there's real strengths and weaknesses with both districts. And so it's important to try to maximize opportunities for students on both sides of the bridge. And I think collaboration is always a better answer than isolation. So the more that we can partner together, the more we can leverage our resources, and the better opportunities we can have for students.
Thank you. The next question is for Mrs. Lasagna. What is your plan to help create more businesses and job opportunities in Auburn?
I think part of my plan is, having spent three and a half years working with the Joint Charter Commission, and getting a real understanding of the strengths and challenges of both of the cities, that no matter how the vote comes out, is to build on some of the ideas that have come together. And also, we really need, it's unfortunate that the Lewiston Auburn Economic Growth Council no longer represents or works with both cities. I think we need something like that to really work collaboratively, as opposed to pulling apart from each other and competing about getting businesses.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Hayes. What do you hope to accomplish if you get elected?
How many minutes? No, I guess, I guess a lot of it depends on how the merger goes. You know, I think that if the merger goes forward, then I think, as a council, we have our work to do to make sure that we follow the outline that's been presented, and be prepared to be won two years out. If we don't merge, I think there's a lot of repair to be made with respect to cooperation, relationships. So I think, for me, it's really communication, and making sure that we have good communication, that we show respect for one another on the council, to the school board, and then with our counterparts in Lewiston. And I think I'd work hard to make sure that we regain a footing where we're working well together, recognizing that we really are one community. What happens in Lewiston affects us here in Auburn, vice versa. I think we've heard that some of us live here in Auburn, work in Lewiston, and vice versa. So I think we need to be one community, and beyond even Auburn-Lewiston, I think that regionally, we need to work better together. And if we're going to compete with other larger areas, particularly Portland, South Portland, we have to speak as one voice.
Thank you.
My question is for the Ward Five candidates, running for the City Council. According to the Sun Journal, Lufthansa will be, has announced that they'll be leaving the airport, and will most likely lose 30 to 40 high-paying jobs in their multiplier effect in the community. So what are your guys' plans for, once Lufthansa leaves the airport, how will you have more job growth here in the city? Mr. Miles?
Sure. I think the first thing is that we need to take a step back and take a look at the situation, and understand that when that announcement was made, we need to make sure that we had some sort of support for those workers and the employees, that they had a place to go when that job came up. It's not a surprise that the job is leaving. That being said, some type of work program to see what the individuals are skilled at, and what they're trained in, so that we can immediately try to help them fill those positions as a part of our community and a part as our city. I feel like that's our duty to help them out. Where if we're going to take jobs away, we're going to lose jobs, then we need to make sure that we're going to help them fill those jobs as well. Another thing is working with small business here in Auburn. My family has an extensive history in small business. And knowing that there are certain peak periods when employees are needed, making sure that we work with local businesses to see what positions may need to be filled, reaching out to the employees that will be losing their positions, and then working together to make sure that those positions are filled by those employees. It's extremely important, and that's another reason why I wanted to run for City Council, to make sure that we are supporting our own community here in Auburn.
Thank you. The airport has known this for quite a while, and so has the city itself. The skills that are needed out there, that these people are doing, I don't know if we have another place in the city that can actually put these people to work and art. That is one of the biggest problems we have in the city of Auburn, in my opinion. We don't have the jobs that it takes for these real skilled people, and the job that they're doing out there on these airplanes, and I guess we would call them small jets. I don't think there's any other place local that they could go to work. And that is something that I'm hoping that the gentleman that runs the airport has been involved with ever since we knew that they were going to leave this area. And the city of Auburn has been working with the hangar, or in their case, what they call the facility to work on these planes. I believe we have made it that we purchase it. I think you're going to find it's going to turn into a great facility for the airport itself to be able to house, work on planes, and have a place for people to bring more planes into the airport. And that is something that I think the city's been working towards for a long time. We do need new hangars out there, which could maybe bring some skills which these people have. But I'm not sure if we're ready to put these people to work in our city. And we need to figure out ahead of time how to put these people to work if these jobs are going to come to an end. So that's our job right now, as councillors and as the city of Auburn.
I have a question for Mrs. Alfreda Fornier. What is a priority concern you might have regarding the district that has not been raised?
Regarding the district?
Regarding the district.
You mean the school district, or do you mean the district that I represent?
The district that you're representing.
Okay. I think one of the issues is that it is a, it's a district between city and country. And I know that when I was a commissioner, one of the things that we did was increase our number of commissioners, because we didn't have enough coverage for all of the more rural communities. There were, at that point... There were, at that point, there were three, you know, commissioners and then we increased four more positions. So I think this is the same thing here, taking a look at have we adequately represented Ward Four? And I believe that it's kind of a quiet ward and a quiet district in terms of the commissioners. This is a quiet district. And just getting more interest and getting more connection going, face-to-face, going door-to-door. I've already been doing that kind of thing. It was interesting when I campaigned because I found that there were a lot of lovely people and it's like this was kind of new to them. All of a sudden someone's talking to me and, "What are your interests?" I would ask them, "What are your interests? What are your concerns?" And I think that's yet to be found because it's relatively new in terms of me as a, as a future councillor. But it's a lovely district, it's a lovely ward. And I think that looking at this cross over between city and rural. And then we go to Ward Five, which is the same thing too, that's definitely into the rural section. So we have a lot of social, you know, demographics. And I think being able to meet the needs of all of them with all their particular needs, that would be the greatest thing of all. So to flesh it out, find out what it is and represent them adequately.
Thank you very much.
My question is for Mr. Titus. What is a priority concern you might have regarding the district that has not been raised yet?
In Ward Three? Well, ever since I've been a councillor, one of my goals has been to give value to the taxpayer. And in my ward, that seems to be very valuable to them, to know that we're working towards that. One of the things that's always bothered me is we have three, five, six percent increases in budgets, but they're simply maintenance budgets. We can't do anything extra. We can't grow. It's very frustrating. So to grow, we've got to have a 10% increase and people just can't stand that, it's obvious. So, you know, what I'm trying to do is I have more value-added things for the taxpayers of the city and everybody else can enjoy too. That's why I'm championing the lighting project. That's why I want Public Works to be able to do more. I want everybody to understand they're getting something that they can see, touch, and feel and not just an increase that is quote-unquote "maintenance." That drives me crazy. As people know, increases drive me crazy anyway, but when we have an increase and it just simply maintains what we were doing, it's really a kind of a lost loss for everybody.
Thank you.
My question is for the two at-large candidates. Why do you think you are the most qualified or best candidate for the seat? We'll start with Ms. Jerry.
I think I'm best qualified from the knowledge I have learned and experiences that I've got when I was, when I served into the legislature and then when I was on the council. I make myself available for all my constituents. Auburn, Auburn is the best place to live. I believe that I'm the best candidate or one of the best candidates is because I have the time that I can dedicate to fully fulfill all the responsibilities and the obligations that I occur. I've always been available. I try to talk with everyone if anyone has an issue. I'm willing to go the extra effort to make sure that if they have issues, questions, or concerns, they get an answer. And if I don't know an answer, I can admit it and I will find an answer and I will, I'll go to the right people to get the answers and go back to whoever asked me whatever information. I think that's the qualities. People want to be able to reach their councillor. They want to know that their, their needs and their concerns are addressed and valid. They don't want councillors to, when they approach them, blow them off and pretend that they, they're paying attention when they're not. And I've never blew off a person. I've always did the best I could. And like I said, I really care about the city.
Mr. Young?
I think anybody that runs for office does it out of the love of their city. And certainly my opponent that's sitting beside me probably shares those views. What, what makes a person most qualified is a person that can convince the people that they see and talk to that, that they really care. And I really care and not to say that other people don't. But I'm willing to knock on the doors and talk to the people that I can find. There's what, 1,500, 15,000 registered voters in Auburn, so it's really impossible for me to speak to every one of them. But I will, I'll go out and knock on every door that I can find somebody willing to listen. And I tell them I'm David Young. I'm running for city council at large. And I, and ask them if they expect to see me. And they said, "No." Okay. And I give them a card. I say, "Get back to me with your big, long list." And, and they thank me for that. And then I tell them there's three people running. They can vote twice, but not for the same person. And they kind of look at me. Well, that's what the ballot says. You can vote twice, but not for the same person. And, okay, I shouldn't talk over too, too long here. But, you know, we, we try. We don't get a lot of phone calls. Maybe my opponent does, but I've never received very many. And when I was at ward level, I usually get them from outside my ward. But as a city councillor, you're a city councillor and you should be listening to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is for Mrs. Bonnie Hayes. What has been your personal involvement with education in our community up to now?
Up to now? I started when my children were very young. My daughter was in the fifth grade and my son was in kindergarten. I was president of the PTO at that time at Fairview School. I went on to become president of the Auburn Education Council, which was a group of PTO parents and other parents that gathered here in Auburn Hall. And we did district-wide planning. I have a son that graduated from Edward Little. I have a daughter that graduated from Edward Little. I have a granddaughter that is at Fairview. So my experience with the Auburn School Department has been intense for about 25 years or more on it. So that's where I come from with the education.
Thank you. I have a question for Mrs. Lasagna. What are your qualifications for the position you're running for?
I think I have excitement. I think I'm collaborative. I think that I'm thoughtful and I'm committed to this work. I'm new, but I think coming in with fresh eyes is really important, especially at this point in both the history of both cities in terms of Auburn. As I mentioned before, having been on the Joint Charter Commission for three and a half years, I've dug into this community and found the things that are great about it and also understand what the challenges are and also have been able to work with others to think of creative, interesting, visionary ideas about how to grow this community, especially for young people.
Thank you. My next question is for the three at-large candidates, starting with Ms. Nissindovic. Why do you think you are the most qualified or the best candidate for this seat?
Well, my first response would be that I have two children in Auburn schools right now. I have a ninth grader and a sixth grader. And it's my firm belief that those that are most impacted by policies are also those most qualified to weigh in on policies and provide input. So I'm really motivated to represent parents. So that would be my first response. And secondly, I'm also an advocate and I'm interested in making sure that teachers and parents' concerns are at the table. And I think that means challenging the status quo, asking critical questions, and being willing to look at things with fresh eyes and seek out input from the community.
And Ms. Gucci?
Well, I feel like I'm qualified for this position because I have a lot of institutional knowledge. I've worked in the system for 25 years. I've had all of you in the library, my big seniors now. I feel like I come from the perspective of the staff. And when you're making decisions on the school board, you need to consider all the parts. You need to consider the students and I've certainly had a lot of experience with teenagers. I was on the staff and was leader on the staff. I also am a parent of three EL grads and I have three grandchildren in the system right now, two at Fairview and one at the high school. And I'm part of the community. And those are the three elements of Division 2020 and those are the elements and the components of any decision that we need to make. I also feel like I'm a good listener and I'm not copying Holly, but I am a collaborator and I think I can bring a little bit of discernment and some integrity to the position.
Thank you. And Ms. Fontaine?
Yes. Well, I'm a mom. For those of you that don't know, I have three kids, two at Fairview, one at Edward Little. So that was my initial drive two years ago when somebody said, "We don't have, would you want to run for school committee?" Because people that know me know I'm passionate and whatever I do, I'm very passionate. I do the best I can. So I said, "Hey, I'll try it," even though I don't have the time, but I figured I will, if it's something I'm passionate, I make the time to do it. A lot of my friends and family think I'm crazy, but again, I make the time so that I know that Auburn students can get the best they possibly can because they deserve that. I'm also very transparent for those parents, teachers, staff, administrators that have had any issues in the last two years I've sat on the board. Anybody I talk to will know that I will pick up the phone call. And if I can't speak now, I will, I will call you back. I spend hours on the phone over the last two years speaking with parents or teachers, anybody that would call me. I will make the time. I also just think our schools can be great. I think we have a long way to come with everything, but I know we can do it. And if we work together with the councillors, with the mayor, with everybody within the community, it does take a village to raise a child. And I firmly encourage all parents out there, you know, be involved in the community. Like the councillor said, you know, you have to work with your kids at home. It just doesn't happen with the school. We can't put all of our faith within the schools to make great children. We all need to give back so that we can have a great city and a great outcome.
Thank you. So I would like to ask the Ward Five candidates, they're different questions, but just based off since Mr. Walker is an incumbent, that's why they're different, but they're basically the same. So this question is for Mr. Walker. What are one of your successes in your previous terms and what is one thing you would have changed?
Well, I guess we'll go with the master plan for New Auburn itself. We've been working on that for quite a few years. I started actually before I was a councillor, which I've been a councillor for six years at this point. The master plan, I believe we've laid out a great plan that's going to grow the New Auburn area. It's going to be great for people that want to come in there, open some small businesses, maybe even build a couple high-rises, meaning three or four-story apartment houses. The worst part of it, I guess, or the slowest part of it is, it's taken us so long to get all this off the ground. That is something that I'm hoping moving forward, that this council will try its best to get things like that to work in a little more speedier way. And, and I know a lot of it had to do with the change of command, meaning our managers. We had one, lost one, got another one. And now I think we're in the driver's seat. I think we will move this master plan forward. It's going to be a great thing for the New Auburn people and the city overall will benefit from this. Over the years, this part of the city, meaning what we call the Old Auburn, has always benefited from the different programs that have come along and spent a lot of money. It's, it's a great opportunity for New Auburn to have something that we can move forward with and grow with and I hope make all the people happy.
Thank you. This question is for Mr. Miles. What do you hope to accomplish if you get elected?
Well, firstly, I just want to thank you and your classmates for coming tonight. I know the last thing I wanted to do when I was 18 was to go to a city council meeting, but I appreciate your time. The most important thing to me is when my wife and I decided to move to Auburn after I had been teaching now for 14 years, eight of those in Lewiston, is that we bought our forever home here in Auburn a few years ago. And my wife said to me, "How are we going to ensure that our son Lincoln grows up and has a terrific childhood and goes to amazing schools and lives in an amazing community?" And I said that I would run for city council because once you become a father or a mother, you'll see that you'll do anything for your children. And going out and just meeting the people of my ward and understanding what their wants, what their needs are. One thing that keeps coming back to us, other than the raising taxes, which is obviously understandable, another thing that they've talked about is the recycling and trash system that we have currently. A university professor, University of Maine, four independent studies showed that Portland currently this year will be saving around $350,000 by switching to the recycling and trash carts. If we took our population into size, that'd be roughly around $85,000 or so that we could save here in Auburn. Could go to other areas such as municipalities, et cetera, et cetera. They weren't so much concerned about the, the money, it's more about the trash that's up and down the streets, not knowing when the recycling is going to come here or there. But just really caring about their neighborhood. And I thought that was really interesting because the more I got to know people, the more, how much pride they have. And the more that I've talked to people, the more pride I've come to see in Ward Five. And I'm so glad that we did make our decision to buy our forever home. And hopefully that we can be a part of that moving forward, that we can help and bring back those things that the people of the ward want and honestly need.
Thank you.
My question is for Ms. Lasagna running for Ward One. What is your plan to help create more businesses and job opportunities here in Auburn?
Well, I think we need to get back to some of the thinking that the Lewiston Auburn Economic Growth Council did between the two cities. I think that we need to look at what's working on both sides of the river, whatever happens with the merger, and figure out what are the best ways to go about doing this. I think that we need to be consulting with many members of the community. I look at New Auburn and the success that they've had there, thinking of some new ideas and the energy around that. And I think that the city as a whole can look at the successes they've had there and that can help inform other ways that we can bring businesses to Auburn itself.
My question is for Robert Hayes. What is the biggest issue facing your ward and how would you help to solve the problem?
I think, actually, I think issues in Ward Two probably are the same issues throughout the community. So I don't think there's any one issue that's particular to, to the ward. There is one body of water, however, that is particular to Ward Two and that's Taylor Pond. So I think that that is an issue. I think that, you know, we have two bodies of water, Lake Auburn, which is a water supply, and we protect that dearly to ensure that we have quality both for Auburn and Lewiston. Taylor Pond, I think, offers an opportunity. It's a smaller body of water, so we have to protect it, but I think it does provide a, a water body for recreation as well as for greater residential-type development, having the amenity of water view and so forth. So I think an area that, it's not a new issue, it has arisen, and that's particularly on the southeastern shore where there's, you know, the roads are some private. There's water that's provided for some areas but not others. Some water, I think, is drawn from the pond, other water from wells. So I think the-
So I think the activity around Taylor Pond probably is kind of unique to Ward Two, but it is an issue for Auburn as a whole.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Fornier. I'm a senior, and we're all seniors, leaving, a lot of us are going to leave Auburn for college. What do you think will bring me and other graduates back?
You're talking about my kids. One of them has a job in Rhode Island and she's dealing with three hospitals, so it's going to be hard for her to replicate that up here, although she would love to come back. But my son decided to come back here after college. What drew him here was the community, the smaller communities within the larger community. He used to walk every day to school with his buddies and walk back after school with his buddies. He built lifelong friendships doing that. He learned to become confident in himself because of the smaller community, the smaller school. So when he went to school, he knew everybody in that school. So that was one of the big things for him. The other one was opportunities to do the work that he studied for. And he went in for business and medical business. Those are harder to find, but I think if we look at what we have to offer here in our communities within both sides of the river actually, are we having, are we offering enough for, to attract our young people back again? We want them back because we spent all of this money and time in school and raising, the village raising the children, as everybody said today. But all of this work that's gone into you, one person, we want you back because that was a lot of time put in and a lot of money as well and money well spent. But, you know, you young people, we want you back. And we have to make you feel welcome too. We have to make sure that we've got something available for you and in your area of expertise and not let you get away, not let you, you know, go someplace else to work. So we have to... You know what? I need to see that sign right in front of me. Thank you.
Our final question is for the at-large school council, school committee candidates. What do you hope to accomplish if you get elected, starting with Ms. Nissinovich?
I think number one on my list of things to accomplish would be to add a teacher and parent voice to the table when we're discussing policies. I think if I were to win, it would be a signal to me that Auburnites are looking for more of a parent voice because that's what I'm campaigning as. Second, I would like to make sure that whatever policies we are deciding on, that there's more of a connection between parents and families and teachers and the administration. There's been a lot of changes to the policies at the school level. There's mass customized learning, there's proficiency-based laws. And especially with the changes, it's even all that more important that parents and teachers are able to weigh in on whether the changes are effective or not. It's one thing to say something in theory, it's another on the ground. So that's really my goal, is to sort of equalize the playing field and allow for teacher input and parent input and student input. Thank you.
I agree with Claire. There needs to be some more input from students, from parents, and from the staff. One of my objectives is to raise the morale at Edward Little High School of the teachers. I also am interested in looking at programming for the new high school. Are we going to put up what we already have or are we going to build something that's going to move forward and be a 21st century high school? And I'm very interested in being a part of that decision-making. I've seen some wonderful schools around New England and around the state that are doing some marvelous things. And I think it's time that we sit as a community and decide how we're going to do that.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. What do you hope to accomplish if you get elected?
So the last two years has been a huge learning experience and there's so much more to learn and to do. So I hope that I'll have the opportunity to sit another two years. Initially, like I said, I came on to the committee, well, I ran for the committee because I wanted to be a voice for students. Being a mom with three kids, traditionally there weren't a lot of board members that had children. So just like Claire said, I really think it's important to be a voice for our kids and parents. I'm sad to see last year there was five of us on the board that had children and there potentially may only be two this year, for the next two years. I want to be transparent to people. I want teachers or students to call me even with the hot issues that they may not feel comfortable talking to the administrators about so that I can get that information out to the board and show them that this is a legit concern. You know, these are our teachers that we have to, they need to be proud to be teachers of EL. Students need to be proud or we're not going to have successful schools. The transparency thing is huge, whether it's a parent, staff, or student, I just want to be their voice because we need to hear all the voices of the children, the parents, and the teachers in order to get things done.
Thank you.
All righty, well, that is all we have time for tonight. I just want to thank you all for participating. Thank you, everybody, for coming and thank you all for giving us seniors the opportunity. Oh, yes, sorry.
I just want to say before we break up, thank you all very much. I know that you put a lot of time into this and you've done a wonderful job and I fought it all the way. I wanted to be home in my jammies tonight. So I do thank you very, very much for doing this. It was marvelous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.